Something needs to change?
All right, we'll take a motion to come out of recess for the committee of the whole.
Motion to come out of recess.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries four zero. We are back in action here. So sixty-five overlay, we want to discuss that anymore or think we got a pretty good direction on?
I think we have a good direction in what to look for options and possibilities for it and we'll bring it up once we're done with the sign ordinance if that's okay.
Okay, that sounds good. So then moving on to the sign ordinance. Let's see, and I, we, so we're on five C, so we already kind of discussed several things kind of leading up to that. Let me just kind of get back to my notes on that section, so.
Page what?
Five, five C.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So subdivision five. And then they've, the other stuff, prior to that, you guys have already made the changes on and so we're up to speed on, on the stuff prior to this, so. So, let's see, let me kind of read this here, and this is something we've been going through for a long time and I, I made my notes, of course, and reviewed it all, you know, six months ago, probably, something like that. So let me just try to remember what I was, what I was looking at here. Okay, so that first section there. Subdivision. So I think this was, what I was taking issue with was just the, the amount of signs that you're allowed to have, so you can only have three hundred, one freestanding sign per three hundred feet of frontage. And I just feel like you're gonna have, I mean, I get that you don't want, you know, and your, your note is the one in red below that, that, you know, you definitely can have too much, you know, and it creates a, you know, a hazard sort of for pedestrians and, and for, you know, people driving, but, you know, I guess I just see a business is not gonna put thousands and thousands of dollars worth of signage in if they don't feel they have a need for it. You know what I mean? Like, it's not that they just want to put it in to make it, you know, a big cluster of signs.
We, we do allow for variances for signage, so if you remember the Dairy Queen signage plan, they were under the three hundred square feet. So there is an allowance for that, so we do have the opportunity for people to put in more signs if they, if we allow for the variance. Highway sixty-five overlay district, just highway sixty-five itself, MINDOT does have their requirements that we have to follow regardless, so. For that area specifically, I think a good thing to consider that we did discuss before is when you have a place like East Dua Mall, um, and multiple businesses, each business could theoretically have, if we're allowing multiple signs, could have their own sign. And so that would be a lot of signs.
Well, technically, yeah, but I mean, the landlord is not gonna allow you to put seven signs out on the road either, you know what I mean, so.
We do have some condo buildings though where the, they're all landlords, so just keeping things like that into consideration.
I guess you're right about that, yeah, I mean, there must be a, I'm guessing even there though, they've got to have some kind of a form of, of, you know, not a homeowners association, but something similar to that where they would have to decide as a group to allow that and they're not gonna want, you know, a whole bunch of signs. What she's talking about is the building over by, with Snap Fitness in it.
Yes, yes.
So anyway, that was my thought there is that I'd like to see that, you know, at the very least, I'd like to see it, you know, maybe that, that foot, that's, frontage requirement lowered, just so it's a little bit more flexible, or, or just remove it altogether and just trust that we're gonna have businesses that are, are not gonna wanna overdo the, the signage, I mean, I, I just don't think they're gonna spend that kind of money to where it's gonna become a problem. And my whole idea with this, and I'm sure I, I probably gave this spiel when we first started discussing it, but I just, I, I love advertising and I love signs and I like that, you know, businesses get a chance to express themselves and they get a chance to, to try to promote their products and, you know, and I just, being involved in that and being a business owner, I mean, you know how frustrating stuff is when you're trying to do this and you cannot, you know, you run into all these little different rules and regulations and it's all a bunch of ticky tack kind of stuff and, you know, if, if a couple of extra signs is gonna ruin somebody's day, well then, you know, you probably need to, to, you know, look for bigger, more important problems, but. But, so anyway, that would, that would be my, my suggestion would be that we, I, I'd like to just get rid of that.
I'm not sure on this one. I just don't want to say get rid of it and then somehow we have a problem with it. But I, I agree that we should have a little more flexibility. But how do you keep, I don't know.
And we do allow some flexibility for the signage master plans, so in those instances, people can put up multiple signs, just like Dairy Queen is a good example. So they have freestanding signs all over their parcel because that's what they need for, to run their business. Um, but it's just making sure that we're not getting seven signs in a row, which isn't to the benefit of the business owners, the other business owners in a building either. If you're one of the tenants and you decide, or one of the busi- building owners, you decide, hey, I'm gonna put seven signs out here so that everybody sees my signs first, then it's incumbent, you know.
Jimmy, I guess, do you know on this, what other cities are doing? I know you've probably got some experience with this, but maybe not this specifically. Do you know if other cities have a similar to, similar?
I mean, I guess I don't know, I don't know for sure, but yeah, I mean, I would say a lot of cities, I mean, you see cities where they have gotten rid of those blackened, signs with the neon lettering on them and stuff, and it's like, I mean, that's a great way to advertise and there's, there's a lot of cities that don't allow those at all. And it's, it's, and we allow them here if they're grandfathered in and I don't know if we've gotten to that section yet, I guess, in this, in this discussion, or if we, I don't think we've gotten to it, no. So, so I mean, I just, to, to me, those businesses should have the ability to advertise and I just, I trust that they're gonna make the right decision on, I mean, these signs are not cheap, they're just not gonna spend, I mean, Mike, I can, I can just picture, you're not gonna spend thousands and thousands of dollars on a sign you don't need, right? That just doesn't happen, so.
This, 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 that argument, that, that's me and my beer sign. Beer. Don't need to spend a hundred thousand bucks on that one.
Yeah. It just doesn't, it just, so I mean, I just would rather always lean toward, just make it more flexible and then, you know, it's just, people, the, and the reality is that other things, limit what you do because it's, you're just not gonna spend that kind of money to, to be, you know, wasteful with it, so.
I think it would be in the best interest of the city, just so that we do have the ability to have a leg to stand on if we get somebody who's, sign crazy, I don't know.
I think, I agree in this case.
Just as you had mentioned and, you know, recommended possibly just lowering that square, or that linear footage, to a smaller number so that we can allow the possibility of more signs on, more freestanding signs on a parcel.
I think we should just get rid of it.
I guess I'm, I'm not with, for getting completely rid of it.
Okay.
Restricting it a little bit, okay, or bringing it up.
What do you say we go down to one fifty? We'll split the difference. Instead of three hundred.
I think a hundred fifty is probably fair. That's a pretty big distance.
Or actually, it's not, we're not, that's, that's the wrong way to word it, so it'd be a maximum of two.
Two signs per three hundred.
Yeah. So we wouldn't change the, the, the frontage language, but we would change the maximum allowed. So it'd be a maximum of two freestanding signs is permitted with the exception of business center greater than two acres. One, two freestanding signs per three hundred feet of zoning lot frontage may be located not less than three hundred feet, from any other freestanding sign, so I mean, that, then that last line, that must change to a hundred and fifty. Okay? So that, yeah, so, cause that one was talking about the distance apart and not the, the frontage there, so.
See, and I think in a business district, there's, people are looking, you know, they're in a car, they're driving, they wanna see a sign.
They wanna see signs, but I don't think they wanna see them. It's like, too much.
Right, I agree, there's two, there's a thing.
Think about it this way, there, there's gonna be one business owner that says, well, they have no sign requirements, so now I'm gonna buy twenty signs, so everybody has to see it. Think about wall drug. That's exactly right.
Exactly what's gonna happen, it's gonna be like, oh, that's some, that's a new milestone in the city now, I won't, you know.
Quite honestly, eh, I would do something like that.
Right.
Honestly.
See?
Like.
Wall drug?
Look at the, look at dirt works. They want their signs everywhere. I'm not saying they're gonna go out and do this, but they want their signs everywhere and I give them all the credit for it. But if you got a little extra money to play with, yeah.
It would happen.
So we go up one hundred feet, that's pretty far.
I think a hundred fifty is fair.
I'm okay with a hundred.
Keep working it down.
I'm just trying to think if, if I'm wording that right though, so the maximum number of, so I mean, I don't know if we need a maximum number of signs permitted because the, the exception of business greater than two acres, cause really you're limiting it based off of the frontage anyway, right? So actually we do, we do want to change the frontage language to the one fifty the way I thought originally, right?
Yeah, I would say you do one freestanding sign per a hundred and fifty feet of zoning lot frontage.
Yep.
And then it actually would allow for three signs if you have four hundred and fifty.
Right, so then, so we'd get rid of the maximum amount of signs permitted, so that whole first sentence could be removed.
Oh, yep, except for this, that does allow for an exception for businesses with more than two acres, so if you do have like Coburn's lot, for instance, they could potentially have more signs, so this.
Well, but they would by the frontage anyway, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So yeah, we could theoretically get rid of that.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, so we'll just change it to one freestanding sign. Do you wanna go one fifty or one hundred?
I think one fifty.
Jeff?
I think one fifty is just, that's fine.
I'm all right, we got, we, we don't have a fourth guy or a fifth guy here, so yeah. All right, so we'll, so we'll go, remove the first sentence and then to a hundred and fifty feet per sign on the frontage on both of those.
So I have a question, kind of, you, you'd mentioned the sixty-five and the sign requirements that they have, how far off of the road do they own, or do they have jurisdiction on signage?
Um, throughout their entire right of way, so just to their right of way, which is pretty wide.
Oh, okay, so it depends on which area of sixty-five it probably is?
Yeah, it's pretty straight through the city.
Okay. Do you have any idea how far it is off the average road? I suppose that would be a Jason question.
Sorry.
Okay. Yeah.
But it just has to be out of the right of way. They don't have like a square footage off, so I just follow the right of way.
So someone could theoretically, if they didn't want to follow the highway sixty-five rules, they could set it back inside of?
We require a ten, the ten feet like we do everywhere else, um, so it's the same, um, throughout the city, so off of that right of way, that's what we require.
Okay.
So that's where all the signs are set.
Okay.
I think the biggest impact for the overlay district in terms of signs is they have to have a, a better base, it has to be more decorative, so there's extra cost. It's not really the placement, as it is the enhanced look of the sign.
And so they do allow a certain number of signs within the overlay dis- or on highway sixty-five a distance, I know they have to be a hundred feet away like for, billboards, like you have to be at least a hundred feet away.
So someone couldn't just say, hey, I wanna do this, but I'll just do it inside city space instead of highway sixty-five space, could they do that and, no? Okay.
No. Any parcel along highway sixty-five has to follow the highway sixty-five rules.
So you depend on the state on that.
Yeah, I mean, we can only control.
Oh, right, right, that's what I was asking, is there a way that we can allow them to build right inside of the, you know?
Yeah.
And follow city code instead of the?
What always drove me crazy about the sixty-five overlay was you had all these rules and that you, they wanted conformity between all these buildings. And then you have, you know, we had, Caribou came in and said, well, we wanna use our own colors and our own signs and, oh, yes, yes, you bet.
It's favoritism.
Yeah, no problem, you know, and so like, you'll do that for Caribou, but you want everybody else to have to be, you know, conformed to one another and that, that doesn't make sense, so. Uh, I did just think though, Keith, we should, we should try to get you, uh, get you taken care of here before we, this is gonna be dragging on here, so. Let's, let's, if you guys don't mind, let's go ahead and do E-six next and then we'll go back to that.
I agree with that.
Sign discussion, so I don't want to make you sit here all night just to listen to us talk about signs and.
Well, it's important, you're gonna be getting a sign maybe, so.
I, I suppose that's true.
That's the only sign I care about.
We probably could go.
Yeah, right.
We, we probably could go Emerald Dash Borer next there even if you wanted to, Matt.
He's got plenty of time.
Uh, we probably should try to think about that maybe too when we've scheduled, when we actually create these and maybe I'll, I'll try to do a better job of, of organizing those maybe. I'm, I'm not the one that actually does it, but maybe we should think about how do we get people out of here if they don't have to be here all night, but. Uh, go ahead there Keith, let's go to E-six and Instacart and DoorDash at the liquor store.
All right, um, Mayor and Council, uh, put together a little handout, I think Jaden distributed that to, to everyone. I don't know if you had a chance to look over that, but I, I can kind of summarize that for you and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, um, that you have. But basically, the third-party delivery services make money by charging customers fees and charging retailers' commission rates and then on top of that, they also sell the data that they mine from the businesses, um, through, um, basically integrating with our point-of-sale system, so they're, they're making money in several different ways. On the first page there, I, I did a screenshot of what DoorDash charges for commission rates, there's three different packages. The least, the least expensive for us would be fifteen percent commission, then it goes to twenty-five percent commission and thirty percent commission. The more you pay for a commission, the less fees that customers have through DoorDash, but we're losing margin. So below that, I have an example given, um, say if we were to sell a twelve-pack of White Claw at the store, we're making three dollars and nineteen cents, uh, a package on that. If we were using the fifteen percent commission rate, we'd be making sixty-four cents and if we went with any of the other packages, we'd actually be losing money on every package that we sell. Which I, I wouldn't be a very good store manager if I was in the business of losing money, so that's kind of a big red flag. One, one way around that is to raise your price on those platforms. I, you know, I understand that would alleviate us losing margin, but, if you look at it for the, from the consumer side, is it gonna be used if it's gonna cost more and we're, you know, our, our service area, our market is the city of Iscany and we specifically try to target people coming up sixty-five heading north and we've done a good job of that. If we were to sign up with say DoorDash or Instacart, you know, what, who would we be, who would we be gaining at, on those services, you know? I, I don't have a good answer to that, um, so.
Can I interrupt quick?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, absolutely.
Do you know if any of the other liquor stores around here are doing DoorDash or Instacart? I think we have a competitive advantage if we do, even if we raise the prices, because, I mean, I've been a lot of, a lot of places like even say a, a house party and people want food, but nobody can drive, you know? Then you have, you order McDonald's and you pay five times the price and people don't care, so it's, it's one of the things I think people would pay for the convenience.
You, you brought up a good point there, but, you know, it's speaking about like a house party.
Right.
McDonald's and alcohol are two completely different things.
Correct, correct, but it's just an example of.
And I understand that, but that, that's also a big concern of mine.
Yep.
Um, is that the city's liability, um, when it comes down to it, if, if it's, if it's the responsibility of the DoorDash person or the Instacart person to card someone, I have no control over whether they actually do that or not. And when, when teenagers or people that have problems with alcohol, um, can easily access it from home, without having to go to the liquor store, you know, one of the advantage, advantages of being a municipal liquor store is we are the only liquor store in town. So if you, you know, say if you're an alcoholic, you're, you're coming to that liquor store, but you're not making several trips because we, we, we know you. You know, and we, we know that you're not gonna be allowed to buy that, you know that. But if we're opening up another option for people that say are struggling with that, then that's gone, that, that control is gone where they can access it whenever they want. And I'm not saying they can't go to Cambridge and then us or, you know, several liquor stores, but it's just that much easier, um, to create potentially more social issues. And, you know, and I get what you're saying where it, it costs more, people don't care. Some people don't, some people do. You know, um, if price wasn't, wasn't a factor, we'd be making a lot more money, but we need to walk that line of being, being competitive and profitable.
Is that a, is that a typical margin for, you know, that White Claw's one example, is that a typical margin on our average stuff? That seems a little low.
Um, so typical margin on a twelve-pack is a thirty-three percent markup from our cost, so that, that is.
About five bucks.
An average markup, um, you know, we, we run pretty, a pretty tight ship, the, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it, but the two thousand twenty-two state auditor's report came out, not too long ago, and for our market area, we had a thirteen point one percent net profit margin, which was the highest in the area. So, like I said, we're walking that line, we're, we're constantly walking that line where we wanna be profitable, but we wanna be, we wanna have good prices. And, and we want the sales volume, you know, and, and that's, you can have a lower price, if you have the volume, you're still gonna make the same amount of money. But if you're depending on a third-party service, you're, you're paying them to basically be the middleman, um, to complete that sale.
But wouldn't the customer pay them? More so if we go with more of a basic package?
The, the customer's paying them and then, then they pay us.
Right.
But then they take their commission out, so, you know, we're, we're losing money, um, you know, we're going from three nineteen to sixty-four cents, that's one example. You know, that's a, that's, I figured that was kind of a good average because it's not something super expensive or, or really cheap, you know? So I've got that, um, in here. You know, we did get an, an email from the city's attorney, that legal perspective is in here, you know, saying it's, it's allowed under statute. You know, it's, the last sentence in there is what scares me, you know, I see no issues with it unless and until someone abuses the process such as providing alcohol to minors. You know, then, then who's?
Can I interject? Cause we have, just so Council is aware, we have two city attorneys, right, we have a civil attorney, which does like the process that Josie refers to quite a bit. Then we have our criminal prosecution attorney, does criminal prosecution, um, that's Rob Olson from GDO Law, so I reached out to him today just to get some, so his opinion on state statute. And just to read it to you, it says, it is illegal to sell, there's a comma, furnish, or give alcohol to a person under twenty-one years of age. So under this model, Iscany Liquors selling, somebody else is furnishing. But the statute says it's illegal to sell, so we're relying on a third-party vendor to check an ID, make sure it's valid. If they don't, under the state statute, there is criminal liability that could fall back on whoever in his store would pack that package up and give it out for delivery. Not saying that it will happen, but his opinion is because of the way the comma's in selling, who's selling it? So now, just on a generic minor consumption might not be an issue, but he, you know, brought the example, if you had a felony fatal CBO, CBI, meaning you, you killed somebody in a fatal thing, so now they would go back to that, well, now you'd have a whole different element on seeking out who's criminally liable. I'm not talking about civil, cause he doesn't refer to civil pieces of the puzzle, just the criminal piece, so it's something to think about that hasn't been tested. Nobody's tested that and tried to do that, but the way the statute's written, where it says sell, then there's a comma, barter, furnish, or give alcohol, right? So we're still selling it, or nobody's debating that we're selling it, so by this statute, there is that potential, so that's what I got from him today.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, you know, let's say DoorDash for example, or whoever we would, would go with, I mean, they're, they're obviously in a contract with you to furnish that and to check that ID at the door and, and I mean, if something were to happen that was, was an issue, I mean, boy, DoorDash would really be paying some big bucks, right, so.
So I have, I have a hypothetical example, so say you, you buy alcohol for a minor and you give it to a minor, correct? So you're twenty-four years old and you buy it at the liquor store and you give it to a twenty-year-old and the police find out, they don't go to the liquor store and say, hey, you sold this to a twenty-four-year-old. No, they go to the twenty-four-year-old who was responsible, that actually did the illegal thing.
Right, that would be the furnished part.
Yeah, so I don't know.
But liquor store didn't sell it to a minor. Liquor store sold it to a twenty-four-year-old in that example.
Right.
So in this example, if DoorDash didn't do their job, right, and that's a whole civil issue, we're not talking about civil, so that's a different element. But if DoorDash gave it to somebody inappropriately, obviously it's wrong, there, there's an issue with that, who sold it? The liquor store sold it, so there's no exemption in the criminal statute for, it's not illegal to sell liquor to a minor if somebody else delivers it. You know what I'm saying? That, these laws weren't written.
Where's the money come from? Does it go on a DoorDash account and then it?
DoorDash doesn't have a liquor license to sell the liquor in the city of Iscany.
So they buy it and then sell it.
But the dollars follow to DoorDash then to us, right? So who's selling it is a, I think that's debatable still, but you're right, I mean, we're the ones with the license, right, but, but I mean.
I don't think any court case would ever have any chance. If, if there was a DoorDash driver that didn't ID someone or do what they're required to do, then. Yeah, but, I mean, I get you this perspective, there's always a.
There's a perspective, so, but the thing, you're putting his employees in that predicament, that we don't know. And, and even the attorney said, he didn't know, but he thinks it's a bad idea just because his, this is how the statute's written, it is sell with a comma. And, you know, we can always, uh, put one up for a martyr to see how that plays out, but who wants to try that?
Well, let me just tell you this.
No, that's not fair.
Yeah, I would say that's not fair either, but. But, uh, I called, uh, I looked on today, uh, when I was in my office, I looked at, uh, DoorDash and looked at Coon Rapids Liquors, does DoorDash, and I called down there and asked him about it and I said, you know, do you have a lot of success with that? He says, DoorDash is by far the number one, third-party delivery that we deal with and they deal with four different ones, Uber Eats and Instacart and I forget the other one, but, um, but he said they, I said, just on an average day, I mean, how many orders are you having come in through third-party delivery services? And he said, about thirty to fifty orders a day. So that's Coon Rapids, obviously, it's a little different than Iscany, but.
They're, they're also a private liquor store.
And they're a private liquor store.
So they don't have.
So they don't have the city liability aspect.
Well, but they still have liability.
They're still just as liable, yeah.
Those people are also putting their own personal, you know, it's, they're putting their own neck on the line, and they're willing to do it. I mean, I don't think it's, it's, uh, you know, they obviously don't see the risk in it, and DoorDash is willing to put their own neck on the line, they don't see the risk in it. Um, or at least not enough of it to where they can't be insured for something like that, or, or covered for something like that, so. Uh, but thirty to fifty orders a day, I mean, even if we got, you know, a portion of that, I think would be a benefit.
What if, what if, say, for example, there's someone that lives smack dab in the middle of Iscany and Cambridge? And they can't decide which liquor store to go to?
You've got such a wide variety there of products, and you've, you know, you've got these bottles of, I forget what it is, but if you've got thousand-dollar bottles in there sometimes, I mean, somebody would gladly pay for, uh, somebody to deliver that to them, you know what I mean? I think there's, there's, it's, I don't think it's just for the people at the house party that are gonna need it, or.
Right.
You know, it's for people that want something that they can't get at their local store, because you carry more variety. And I think it's, you know, and they, the, the delivery area can be a pretty wide-ranging area. I mean, I think that Instacart, I mean, you'll, you'll have stuff from, you know, all the way from down at, uh, at Costco down there, all the way up here, you know? So I mean, they're, they're delivering a long ways.
Or, or you think like someone like, like in my circumstance, I have a dad at home on hospice carrying a home. I can't leave some days, so it'd be nice to be able to pay five dollars to get an order delivered if I wanted to have a beer that night. I mean, or if people with kids and they can't leave, they don't, they, maybe they don't have a car, or their car's broken and they need something. I mean, that's, it's a, a service, you know? Look at the amount of Walmart orders that are delivered now, it's huge. I mean, there's Amazon, everything's huge with, with that type of service now, so I think it's.
And I think you're right, it does give us competitive edge, because it's gonna get us sales in Cambridge that we might not otherwise get, that are gonna take away from our, our surrounding, you know, competitors, so.
But I do obviously respect your guys' opinion on it, I just think it's something that I would like to see us try.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we're gonna be in business, we can't be in business hampered by the fact that we're a city. If we're gonna be in business, I mean, if we don't wanna have the risk, then we shouldn't be in the liquor store business at all.
We could all get sued walking into this building.
That is true.
And that is debatable, but I mean, if we're going to do it, then we should do it the best that we think we can, you know? So, I, I think to, to say, well, we're a city and we, we shouldn't compete the way that other businesses do, well, then we shouldn't be in business.
I have a few questions. Um, would this affect our insurance rates at all? And my other, my other concern is, there's no way that I believe we should make one penny less than if them people walked in the liquor store.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I think there should be a premium like ten percent above and beyond the cost of breaking even.
Yeah.
If they walked in the store, so actually you pay a high premium if you wanna deliver.
Taco Bell, they charge, uh, over a north branch, I tested it out one time, and I think it was like a dollar twenty for what would be normally a dollar, so they were marking up twenty percent is what they were charging.
Right.
And then, and then on top of that, DoorDash would have their own, you know, fees and everything as well.
Instead of changing the prices so people don't, so people, you get used to our prices, right? They don't like to see prices increase, but can we just add a cer, an, I say liquor service fee?
You can change the price just on the DoorDash.
Okay.
So you can have, you can have different pricing.
I think it would be nice to keep the price of the products the same.
Everything in the store would stay the same.
Yeah, we wanted to, we wanna touch the price now in the store.
Yeah, and make five percent or ten percent more than if they walked into the liquor store to buy it themselves.
But Josie, Josie was saying something a little different, I think she's saying that on our app, if we do DoorDash, it's the same price on DoorDash, but we add a fee to make up for the difference, is that, that's kinda what you're saying? So that the price, if you go in, it's thirteen ninety-nine, if you look at it online, it's thirteen ninety-nine. But to use the service, you have to pay a liquor service fee, or whatever she said, is that something that's?
Convenience fee or something like that? Because then when, if someone was to call and call the liquor store or call a staffer and say, hey, how much is it for a twelve pack, pack of White Claw? She's, or he's gonna give a price, right, that they know is in the store. Well, then they go online to DoorDash, and they're like, what, it's six dollars, or, you know, whatever. So if the price of the product was the same, but, you know.
Yeah, and I, I guess I don't know if that's an option or not, or if they, I, I feel like you must have to charge more for it, cause otherwise I think people would go that route, cause that would be easier to say, well, here's, we're, we're just paying DoorDash's cost, but DoorDash wants to hide that cost, cause they want you just to charge it in your food, so that doesn't make them look like they're charging more.
You can add a service fee though to DoorDash. I just ordered DoorDash the other day and paid six dollars extra, so I could get it delivered to my house.
It was, it was the business you were ordering from them?
Don't tell Mike. Don't tell Mike.
Yeah, hey, but time is money, Mike.
Cat's out of the bag already, Stephanie.
It was.
A fee and then a service fee? Yes, so I paid three dollars to DoorDash, and then another fee on top of that, from the restaurant.
Okay, so the business just, they didn't raise the price, they just charged a fee to, okay.
Well.
Okay, so I guess maybe.
The problem, yeah, I, I, the problem with a fee is, what if they have a eight hundred dollar order? Um, and you're charging a flat fee for each order?
Well, and that's, that's true, I guess, is it, was it a flat fee, or was it a percentage-based fee?
Um, it was a flat fee.
So that, that's why you'd have to go.
Percentage-based.
It has to be a percentage.
So you'd have to, have to be on the item, you know, cause otherwise you, unless you can do a percentage fee, you know, then that would be. So we, I guess we'd have to look into that, but, um, but yeah, I mean, I guess I don't, I don't see anything here. And maybe, Keith, I mean, if, if there's something that we cut you off on that, you know, you've got, you know, we have, we just got this course, so we haven't had a chance to, you know, dig into it, is there some other points?
I just wanna say, like, we, we are pretty innovative over there. I mean, we have a, we have a website that nobody else has. We do online orders, we do curbside delivery, we're open an hour later than Cambridge on the weekends. Um, you know, it's not that I don't wanna be innovative, and I, and I'm, I'm constantly looking for ways for us to grow our sales. I just wanna make sure that we're not rushing into anything, because no one else is doing it, or because everyone else is doing it. You know, I want it to be for the right reasons. Um, and this, this is, is, I'm a little nervous about, to be honest with you.
I have a question on DoorDash. When they come into a business and they get the product from the business, do they have to sign anything before they leave with that product?
We, my understanding is, we pull the items and then just, we get the order, we have it ready, and they show up and they grab it and go. Um, that's my understanding.
Because if we could put one more layer of protection, which I'd be comfortable with, is have them sign a disclosure saying we're not responsible for ID check, or good, it might help a little bit if we ever run into that weird problem in the future. What?
State statute requires that, upon delivery, invoice must be signed by the person accepting delivery, and by the deliverer, and preserved at the retailer's premise for a period of six months, that's in, well, state rule, but in state statute. The driver has to sign it.
Is that just?
Both of them have to sign it saying, yes, this person was.
That's just for any alcohol delivery.
That's just with alcohol?
Alcohol delivery.
Okay, yeah, because DoorDash food, you don't have to.
That's just, it's not even DoorDash, this is just, if his employees delivered alcohol, you still have to follow that statute.
But it does say on their website of DoorDash that it's contactless, and it says, ensures compliance. Customers agree to valid, validate their age when purchasing alcohol. Dashers verify customer IDs through the DoorDash app when delivering. So I don't know if they're actually signing or anything, I mean, it doesn't say that they're signing or even swiping a license. It says that they're verifying through the app.
And basically, that's when you're placing an order, you're checking a box saying, I'm twenty, at least twenty-one. And then it's supposed to be the driver's responsibility to actually physically check the ID, but.
I do know that through one of the platforms, either Instacart or DoorDash, I had Walgreens delivered when I was sick a few weeks back, and, um, to get my medication, like NyQuil or whatever it was, I had to give them my ID and they had to scan it.
Okay.
So I think they do have that also for some things, so I'm assuming alcohol works similarly.
Well, they, the state statute says they have to, whether they are or aren't, then they're not following the state law, so.
Okay. What's a minimum age to be DoorDash driver?
Uh, I mean, I'm guessing that for alcohol delivery, you'd have to be twenty-one, right? I mean, it's, uh, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, what, I mean, that's a, that's a good question, what do we do if somebody shows up that they're eighteen and they're there for the DoorDash order?
I think DoorDash probably, I, I mean, I feel like, cause Megan signed up for like doing Instacart and stuff like that, and you have to send them your ID and everything like that, too. So I'm guessing that they've gotta be able to say, okay, well, we're not gonna allow people that are not of age to even see these delivery options, you know what I mean?
Correct, yeah.
So maybe it is only eighteen that's delivered, I don't know.
I, I guess, yeah, so, that's a weird one.
We haven't asked for that, um, but technically, you don't, you only have to be eighteen to work at a liquor store.
You don't have to be.
You have to be eighteen, not, you don't have to be twenty-one.
Okay, gotcha. Well, anything else, Keith, that you got that?
Not, not that I have, uh, you know, on top of my mind. I, I will say, if you guys do wanna move forward with this, I would prefer not to do Instacart. I've had a horrible time trying to get any information from them.
Yeah, I mean, that guy that I talked to today said DoorDash was far and away the number one. So I mean, I think if we wanna start, you know, I mean, it's be easy enough to start with just one of them, probably, and not, you know, let's just see how the one goes, and then, you know, we can add more if we want to, or whatever, down the road, but.
I, I agree, I think if we're going to do it, we have to make the same amount or more off of it, because people are willing to pay more for the, for the item.
Yeah.
They do have a, a thirty-day commission-free trial period, um, for DoorDash, so I mean.
As far as integration and stuff like that, I mean, is, is they, what, how does our point of sale do with that?
Well, I mean, we should be able to just allow them access, like work with them to, to give them access, just like we did for City Hive, to have our, our website there, but, you know? So that, that shouldn't be too difficult.
So if you were to have an order come in, I mean, it's gonna pop up with, just like your online ordering, basically, where it'll.
Yeah, they give us.
Give you a notification of some kind, or it's a separate tablet, or?
They have a separate tablet.
Okay.
Type thing, so, and it would notify, notify, notify us, and we get the sale ready and go from there. So, the, the, I think the most time-consuming part would just be to be looking at either adding a fee or, you know, just raising our, maybe there's a way to just say like, hey, our, take our prices and add fifteen percent to it, or ten percent to it. I think that would be easier than adding a fee. You know, that'd be more straightforward, you know? For that example, an eight hundred dollar sale, if you have a flat fee, you're, you're losing a lot of money there, because you're, you're making less on that, so. You know, and, and for like, we did have a, a Van Winkle fifteen-year, um, whiskey that we sold. I would personally be really nervous seeing that go out on a DoorDash.
Yeah, maybe you're right about that, maybe that's not a good argument on my side.
We had a guy drive two and a half hours to, to buy that last one. Um, I was a little disappointed when he showed up with a, um, I was, I wasn't disappointed, but when he walked in with a, um, veteran hat, like he was an old Vietnam vet, I was like, son of a, we just lost ten percent. Cause we did, but, um, and, you know, he, he didn't even know we gave veterans a discount, but, I know, I know. And I, he was a great guy, um, and I, I'd do that for anyone, you know, but I was still a little like, he was picking it up for his son, and I don't think his son was a veteran, so. He got a great deal, but he drove two and a half hours for it, too, so. And we still made money, so.
But no, Keith, I, I don't, I don't have any doubt that you're innovative over there, and that you're working hard on it and stuff. And I understand your guys' concern on, on all that, that, the things that you mentioned. I just, I think if we're, if we're gonna be in business, we should try to, try to be the best, you know, and, uh.
Aren't there some bars in Ham Lake or something that deliver alcohol to, I could've swore there's.
They'd have to have an off-sale license.
Okay.
To, to be able to deliver, I would assume, I don't, I don't think that passes the smokes.
Allow some exceptions during COVID or something like that?
Maybe that's, maybe that's what it was.
They could do cocktails to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if that's what you're talking about or not, but.
I just thought I remember, maybe, I thought, I remember some, either a business or some, or a restaurant or a liquor store in Ham Lake or Blaine or something offering that delivery, too, so, I mean, there could be a lot of them that are, and we just don't know it.
Okay, so what do we wanna do for direction here? I mean, I'd like to see, to see us at least start with DoorDash and, uh, kinda get the ball rolling and, and add that, you know, percentage fee wherever you feel it needs to be, and, and let's just, you know, we've got a thirty-day trial on it, and we've got, uh, you know, we can maybe kinda meet back here again next month at the next Cal meeting and sort of see where it's at and how things are going.
Could we do, could we do maybe the following month, so it gives me some time to set it up and to actually start running it?
Sounds good to me.
I don't think I'd have enough information to bring to the next Cal meeting.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Yep.
Go with you guys?
I guess I'm, I'm gonna go against the, the trend here, and I'm not a fan of it. And the easiest way to explain it for me is, I guess I'm an old soul. You wanna go to the liquor store, go and get it, don't pay extra fees, I see Mike over there laughing.
I, I used to deliver pizza back in the day, back in college and stuff, and it drives my wife bonkers, because every time we order pizza, I'm like, hey, I'll go pick that up, I'm not paying the extra.
Yeah.
I don't pay the extra either, but as a business perspective, it's, it's, yeah, you almost have to consider it, cause people do pay it.
I mean, I'm not saying I would wanna pay it.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
But, but people do, and that's the thing, I mean, that guy, I talked to him today, I mean, it's probably thirty to fifty, I mean, that's a lot of orders. And I, I understand it's different, and it's Coon Rapids, but I mean, that's an awful lot of potential, and, and it's not like it costs you. So I mean, there, there is no cost if it doesn't get used, it doesn't cost you anything, right? It's only a percentage on, on what you sell, right? So I mean, it's not like it's a risk to, to try it, you know, I mean.
Hopefully it's not thirty or fifty, people have to blow into something to start their car.
They'll find other ways to get it to them.
Yeah, they'll find a way.
They'll find a way.
All right, so you got direction three to one up here, that we'd like to, to move forward on that and take a look at it in, uh, in March. Again, at the next committee of the whole, in March, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. And why don't we, should we go ahead and move on to, uh, let me get my computer back up here? Uh, yeah, do we wanna move on to F two?
Sure.
So we can take care of that for Matt here and.
So mayor and council staff was asked to remove certain language in city code, chapter two sixty-four. Pest control that required the city and the homeowner to address all of S's trees. Staff has highlighted some areas in that code there, um, to be, to be looked at or whatever. Um, basically, in a nutshell, it allows residents to address their own trees, and the city doesn't have to do anything, is what it really comes down to.
Yeah, that sounds good, and, and then I read it, you know, after that last meeting, we, we just, you know, I had, I had read it with the intent that you had highlighted what you wanted to, us to look at, and not what you wanted to remove, and so when, when I went back and reread it, uh, you know, with that stuff just removed, it made, it made good sense to me. So I, and, and we would've moved forward with it, I think, at that last meeting, it's just, I just hadn't had a chance to read it with that in mind, you know, so.
Thank you for that, so we'll move forward with that. The other part of that was, um, what's the timeframe for when you would like to start allocating funds to replace some of these trees? In city, in city parks and whatnot?
I know you said you were looking at trying to get some grant money and stuff like that.
Okay.
Um, I mean, how do, what's your thoughts on that? I mean, is it something that's gonna?
Still looking for grant money, just haven't came across anything yet.
Okay. You know, I mean, I guess.
We can come back to that, too, but.
Yeah, which, how many trees do you think you have that are in park, not, not, you know, you mean, actual ones that you wanna replace?
Okay, so basically, every tree in, um, Neighborhood Hills Park is an ash tree.
Okay.
So there's probably like four or five trees in that park that are all ash trees. Um, Matson Park has one.
Neighborhood Hills, why am I, I'm drawing a blank.
Sixth Avenue.
Sixth Avenue.
Sixth and Cedar.
Uh, okay, yeah, okay.
Yep.
There's not much for trees.
There's like four or five trees, and they're all big mature trees, probably, I would say, all of a foot.
Yeah.
Um, but they're all ash trees, and it's inevitable they're gonna end up dying.
Yeah.
I think there's one in Matson Park, um, you know, obviously there's gonna be a legacy in, in, um.
And I guess at this point right now, I don't know that there's any emergency, I mean, it's not like we're gonna go out and cut them down tomorrow or anything like that. So I mean, I think I'd be okay just kinda waiting and seeing, I mean, it's, and I know it's expensive.
And my, my plan is just to wait for them to die, I'm not taking them until they're dead.
Yeah, right, so.
And you don't wanna, you don't wanna try treating them?
Oh, well, we looked into that before, I mean, that's not part of this memo, but, I mean, what they did tell me before is, you can treat them if you want to, but at the end of the day, more than likely, tree's gonna die anyway. I mean, if you wanna treat one, you're just prolonging it.
And there is no treatment out there that will work and then be, make it resistant? You have to continually treat it, and if you stop treating it, it will become infected, that, what they're saying.
So it's a never-ending obligation.
And mature trees are very expensive, so you maybe want us to try and budget for, like in a capital improvement plan type? Is that kinda what you're asking, or how do we save money for it, or is that?
I'm just looking for, you know, when do you wanna start putting money in the budget to buy some of these trees? If we don't go, won't get a grant, or we don't, when does it come available, or we use it for other things? Do you wanna start allocating money next year, the year after, or, um, wait till, you know, five or six years down the road here and see where we're at with trees? I mean.
And, and along with that is also the removal. So these trees, being that they are mature, and a lot of them are so tall, they could impact housing nearby. That's not something that Public Works would take on, we'd have to contract with a tree service company. So, we can wait till we get a little closer to that point, but that's also a cost that the city's unfortunately going to have to incur.
Ten to twenty thousand dollars for six trees, five, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, I, I just, I think it, but without knowing for sure how they're gonna, you know, I mean, how do you really know what you?
I would like to start.
We know, but it's kinda like how staff looks at the lighting info plan.
Yeah.
We put a little bit in to do a little bit, little bit, little bit. You know, instead of having all of a sudden, we need, you know, seventy thousand to take down, you know, twenty, thirty trees and replace them. We thought if we do a little at a time, it seems a little bit more manageable, but.
I would rather see it budgeted for a smaller amount, so we're, you know, it's kinda treat it like a capital improvement project where you kinda put money away for, you know, every year for five years for that item type thing.
Yeah, I get it.
Cause we're inevitably, we're gonna have to spend money on it. We don't know the amount, but it's, I mean, mature trees are expensive, even, you know, they're.
Yeah.
Cutting down the trees.
Nobody says you have to replace it with, you know, mature trees.
Yeah, it's just more likely to survive.
But yeah, but they, they're not cheap, so.
No. Kinda weird that they only attacked that tree.
That's weird.
Hopefully they don't become sort of some, some sort of variant and attack other trees.
Ash is a hardwood tree.
It is hardwood? Oh, I didn't think it was.
We'd probably put an ad on Facebook and have those trees disappear fast.
That's true, yeah.
There are some, that is something that staff could look into. There are some parameters around that with the DNR about how far it can go. Because they are still trying to contain that spread, even though it seems like it's inevitable to go everywhere.
I'm sure there's somebody with inside the city. Some of those annex people might have an outdoor wood burner.
But they'd have to be, they'd have to be insured.
Firewood is the major, uh, major transfers. Why this is spreading like it is, is because of firewood.
Right, right. Well, it would have to stay within the county or the area. I know that.
Yeah, I think south of ninety-five right now is our quarantine area where we're at here.
Is there any way to use park dedication funds for trees?
No, it would be.
It is a new tree.
I would.
Well, maybe perhaps a replacement of it, but not the takedown or.
Yeah, I get that.
It's gotta be an improvement.
Yep.
That is a good point though, yeah. I mean, you would think trees would fall under park dedication.
We could plant a lot of trees with that park dedication.
The only word that might get us is it can't be replacement. So, if it's because a tree came down.
It's impossible to, it's impossible to replace a tree. There's, they're all one of a kind.
Yeah. Plus it's a different kinda tree. It's like a different kind of a plant.
Yeah, that's true. It wouldn't be the same kinda tree, but.
Mike, uh, how do you feel about, I don't know, maybe you didn't hear what we were talking about. We're talking about planning for the Emerald Ash Borer stuff with budgets. How would, would you, how would you wanna approach that? I was thinking like more like a capital improvement project type thing where you budget for it knowing it's gonna come, but you don't know when.
Um, so first is, um, for the actual accounting practice, um, if we had an ongoing, you know, Emerald Ash Borer diseased tree type deal, um, that would be set up as a special revenue fund. Um, that would be otherwise not unbudgeted. You could direct a budget, but it would not be a standard required budget, you know, like the general fundraiser and price fund. The other part would be is having not heard any prior discussion, I will bring this up again. We had a Dutch Elm fund in Granite Falls and you would not believe how fast money could plow through that fund and how little we did to affect anything. It was. Okay.
Replacement trees.
Okay, well, all right, then anecdotally to that extent, uh, we took down a huge number of boulevard trees in Granite Falls. And we got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the DNR and that was smooth as silk. That was money paid straight to a local greenhouse. They said, hey, here's your menu of options. They delivered them, they planted them, they warranted them and the city did very little. It was really smooth.
Could you make the argument too that you could use park dedication funds to plant new trees if you had to?
I think there's other pots of money like, like DNR grants. I wouldn't.
Right, I mean, I'm just saying.
To the extent that I.
And we did talk about grants too, but if you couldn't get a grant, then I think you could justify that.
In my, in my experience, the DNR loves to give away money for trees, so.
Do you know you can't keep turtles anymore, except for turtle races?
Really?
Let's pay a twenty-five dollar.
Longville, Minnesota?
Is that free?
Unbelievable. Can't have a pet turtle.
We can. You just gotta buy it from a pet store.
Well, who wants to do that? I don't know. I don't know.
Were you trying to get a turtle?
I got one. I got it last summer, but it's, well, it's my, not mine. I mean, it practically is, but it's my daughter's, but. Uh, but just, anyway, that's besides the point. As, as long as we're talking about the DNR, let me just throw that one out there.
No more turtles.
Uh, okay, so, so I guess I would be under the, I would say, let's just hold off on spending the money because I think we probably could get a grant, it sounds like. And if we can't get a grant, I think we could probably find other money available in park dedication or, or something like that, that I'd rather just see how it goes and, and.
I think that this is something that staff can just bring up as a side note when we talk about all, during budget workshop time and just see where we're at kinda annually. Here's the update of this item. Do we wanna put something aside at that time or here's what grants we found? And just kinda provide updates and.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay.
Mike, you good with that? You're the budget man, okay?
All right, and then, but yeah, as far as the language goes on that, I think it's, I think it was good unless you guys had any, any opposition, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Okay, um, so back to the signage discussion. All right, so C two, the maximum area and height of a freestanding sign are shown below for the zoning district in which the sign is located. So, there, uh, you have, let's see, you know, square feet of the sign is listed. You've got the height of the sign listed. And. Boy, I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm missing my notes. I copied and pasted some of them and, but anyway, there is a, you know, McDonald's in some of these cities has signs that are like ninety, ninety feet tall or something like that. You know, I mean, um, I don't have any problem with, and what drives me crazy is you see, you know, towns where you have, like say the Dollar Store, their sign is like a pedestal sign, right? Well, you know, they're not required, they could've had a taller sign according to our rules, but they chose to have a, a lower one, right? And they might have, do they not have, no, they just have the one in their building, I think, is the tallest sign that they have over there, but. But anyway, I'd be okay with just getting rid of, of these height requirements, except for obviously, you know, residential areas. I think that's a little different. But, um, but in all of the business districts, I'd be okay with just removing all the height restrictions.
I agree.
And as far, as far as square feet of a sign area, I mean, I don't think you're gonna get more sign than you can pay for, you know, I mean.
Ready to agree a hundred percent on that until, till I started thinking, okay, if Dollar General would've put a ninety foot sign up and I'm sitting on my front deck at night, I'd be looking at that sign.
Yeah, you're kind of in a.
Your skyline just got messed up.
Front lights are driving me crazy and I can only see the end too.
Yeah. And you're kind of in a weird area there where you're next to the business, not a weird area, but I mean.
Why is it that, I've, and it's always really frustrating me that we have business districts or businesses right in the middle of residential housing? I mean, look at Broadway Street with the hotel. It's a residential area, but it's kind of, it's not really right. And George, now you're stuck with a business as your neighbor and that's not really fair. If you, if you're living in a neighborhood, you should never have to be neighbors with a, with a big business like that. Now, I don't, it, it, it comes down to money and say Highway sixty-five, you know, you want all those lots to be commercial, blah, blah, blah. But then you have people that have lived here for thirty plus years, me and you, that get shafted by it. So, I, I don't, I don't like that at all anyways. I mean, it's kind of a side tangent, but.
Yeah.
Businesses aren't, shouldn't be in a residential neighborhood, period. I don't care what it's zoned as.
If, if we could somehow put some language in it that sign can't be visible from the nearest residential, uh, block? Something like that, so.
They put it up ninety feet, at least it would be over the height of where you could see. You'd have to look like this.
That's true. It either has to be over the height or under the height. Um, that'd be my only concern. I mean, people are outside a lot in the summertime and if they can see a big sign from there.
So, we, we do require lumens, lumosity or whatever testing, um, done for the lighting of signs. And they do have to be screened, um, certain areas from like Dairy Queen, for instance, if a residential zone is there. It would have to be screened just for the drive-through signs and the lights shining within a house. Um, the forty-five foot height is what is allowed by MnDOT. So, that's the highest a sign can go along Highway sixty-five.
Well, how does that work with the McDonald's in Blaine? Because their hot, sign is way over forty-five feet and they're right on sixty-five.
Probably get grandfathered in. That's how I'm gonna go.
They must've had to ask for a variance from.
Yeah.
Or, or.
McDonald's, so they gave what they want.
Yeah, different overpasses and different kinds of intersections have different requirements. So, our requirements because of the kind of intersection that we have is pretty limited. So, we can have, um, signs closer to the road, but not as tall. And some of the other intersections I was reading, they can be, they have to be like five hundred feet from the right of way, but they can be taller. So, it just depends what kind of intersection, um, traffic control is there as well as speeds.
So, there's, there's still a way for people to get around. If they wanted, if Dollar General wanted to put a hundred foot sign up, they probably still could if they went through the state, basically.
I don't think so. I've been working with them on some of the billboards and they're pretty strict. So, I don't think they would just be able to put up a hundred foot sign. Or would want to actually in this location because there's, it's beneficial for it to be lower actually. Because of, there's no hill or anything.
Well, what if we just say forty-five feet and then it matches the, what's allowed at the max on the, you know, what on Highway sixty-five? I mean, that would've been, they can do that anyway now according to this, you know what I mean?
So, just forty-five across the board?
Just go forty-five across the board except for the residential areas?
I'm okay with that, but can you guys give me some examples of businesses or future businesses that could come into our main roadways and wanna do something like that? I just can't see an example where it would be even effective for them. I mean, obviously out on sixty-five maybe, but even there, all the signs are.
Yeah, Quick Trip is a good, that's a good example.
They probably would've wanted a hot, taller or bigger sign to get the sixty-five crowd and they're only allowed a thirty foot. So, I'm just, that's just an example.
And I guess there's, there again is the question, is it, is forty-five feet tall enough? I mean, you look at, at Perkins where they put those huge flags up and I don't know if that probably doesn't count as a sign. That's probably why they do that, so they can get there. And you see that massive flag up there and you know, oh, there's Perkins over there and I'm three miles away from town and I can see it, you know, so. Um, so, yeah, that is the, the general idea is that if you're not on the main thoroughfare or whatever, that you still, you have a sign that's tall enough for people to notice, but.
What's our maximum height again right now?
Depends on the area.
Depends on the area right now.
It's a calculation.
And why do we need to change that?
Just cause I'm trying to, just trying to change it so that there's less rules.
Or I think straight to the point, like.
Yeah, I just wanna make it to words.
You could do just the height and be done with it.
Yeah, just across the board forty-five feet or something like that. That would make sense. Cause I mean, it.
I mean, I'm okay with no limit too, so.
When he brings up that point, I'm kinda like, eh, I don't know about that.
We, we do have other things in place that would prevent that for specific situation or are supposed to prevent it, you know? I mean, it's still driving you crazy, but I'm sure we probably did that study at that times too.
But what about, you know, we just, we just spent, was it four thousand or eight thousand dollars to paint the City of Isetanui logo on the water tower?
We spent four for the two logos, I think.
Okay, so I mean, what if, for example, you have Dollar General, they put up a huge sign that blocks where it says the City of Isetanui. So, when you're coming north on sixty-five, you can't read the, read that anymore. So, that would be one example where maybe it's too tall and it, but if, I mean, that's just an extreme example, but.
I'd like to drive around town a little bit and see what forty-five foot would look like in certain businesses. Because you could have a lot of businesses all of a sudden building forty-five foot tall signs. We could have Family Dollar, Quick Trip, uh, who knows?
I wonder, do we, you think we have anything on sixty-five that's forty-five foot now? Is like a Riley's sign?
I think most of them are around forty feet for some reason. That's what's ticking in my head right now. But I can definitely put some of this information together and show you pictures and put it in the admin update for you.
That'd be great. Get a better perspective of what we're looking at.
Yep.
Okay, so let's maybe come, we'll come back to that one just so we have kinda of.
I'd be good with ninety after looking at them.
Yeah, I mean, I just. I mean, it really, it probably would actually make it so high that it wouldn't actually annoy you, you know what I mean?
But then they could go on the middle ground and be right in your face all the time.
Um, so the third, number three there, landscaping requirements, a dense cluster of plantings with a minimum area of one square foot per square foot of sign face for a double face sign. Or two square feet per square foot of sign pa, face for a single face sign. The plantings shall include evergreens and may include perennials, annuals and other varieties of plantings. The line of sight, the line of sight of the sign must not be compromised by the height of the landscaping, so. So, here I just was looking to just remove that. I mean, I just think it's.
It's too much.
It's, yeah, I mean, if they wanna decorate around their sign, then, then they can and if they don't, they don't, they shouldn't have to.
I agree.
You have something against evergreens and perennials?
I just have something against making people do stuff that they don't wanna do. It's, I know it's silly, but it's just, it's, uh, that's, it's as simple as that.
And I mean, we spend staff time looking at them landscape requirements too, you know, so.
The only thing I would say to consider is that we have required that of everybody else who's already put a sign out, so that's my only.
I mean, most likely, most people are gonna say, well, I wanna have something that looks nice. And they, I mean, the average person is gonna, they're gonna, they just spent all this money on a building or something like that or putting their business together. They're gonna put some plants out or they're gonna do something that looks nice, you know, I mean, they're, so that, and that's part of it too, is that I just think people, people will do things on their own that, you know, we're maybe asking them to do, but.
Or think about a business that's just barely scraped enough together for a sign and then they don't realize they gotta spend another ten thousand dollars on, on that. And then that stops the sign. Or they have to do it in segments.
The other thing to consider, I mean, not saying I agree or disagree, but I'll just say, even if they put it in when it's new sign, what's to hold them to maintaining it? Evergreens die in a drought?
Yeah.
I mean, if we're actively looking at code enforcement for that kinda thing, so be it, but if we're not.
Yeah, you're right. What do you guys think? It was three, Jeff?
Yeah, go ahead.
Digit.
I don't like flowers.
All right, so we're gonna take.
I kill them.
We're gonna take number three off.
I can't keep, yeah, that's fine.
Uh, number five, so trunk highway sixty-five overlay district, additional freestanding sign standards. And then it goes into, uh, this A there, but I just would like to get rid of this entire thing here because I'd like to get rid of the sixty-five overlay. So, it shouldn't have any other additional standards.
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay. Uh, E four, the backlighting or illuminating of awnings is not permitted. Um, and when I'm thinking of an awning, I'm thinking of, and, and maybe I'm not understanding this correctly. And I know, I think there's some pictures in the back of this too, but, uh, you know, an awning would be like over the sidewalk or something like that. Um, trying to think of like pizza pub.
Pizza pub, yep.
Pizza pub in Cambridge. They have a lit awning, right? So, we're saying that we're not allowing the lit awning?
I thought that was silly. That was the one that was like, why is that on there? Everybody should be allowed to do whatever they want under their awning.
And that's kind of a classic look.
Yeah.
They'll go it up to Main Street, I mean, in Cambridge there and there's a lot of those, so. So, I guess I'd like to just. Yeah.
The whole side there and you have one sign, that awning's gonna put off more light than that little sign, so maybe that is why.
Yeah, I guess, but, but I mean, really the only place you're gonna have awnings these days is gonna be, you know, an old, and one of the buildings on Main Street or a new building that's trying to look like an old building that would have a parking lot around it and all that kinda stuff, you know, I mean.
You could add language to not, to say that it must stay, the lighting must stay contained or not to give too many lumens off premise or something like that.
Light spill, yeah.
Well, I mean, we probably, do we already have that written in some other code at all?
Um, we, I'll have to check to see what our lumens code, like what it.
Okay.
Pertains to, um, to see if it's worded in here.
Okay. But yeah, so I mean, I guess I'd, I'd like to just get rid of that, cause I think it looks nice, you know, when you have a, a backlit awning, so.
And there are businesses in town, I'm sure that are already doing it.
Probably, yeah. I'm try, I'm just trying to picture which, which ones would be, but you guys are all right with that?
Yep.
I mean, obviously all this stuff is gonna be up for, you know, more discussion and when we go to, to actually pass the final version of it, but. Um, all right, so G five then was next. Only one billboard shall be located on a parcel. The parcel must be a minimum of forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, which is one acre, oops. All existing structures on the parcel and the proposed billboard shall not exceed a maximum of sixty percent lot coverage. Lot coverage shall be deemed to include square footage. Lot coverage shall be deemed to include square footage of all existing structures and the square footage equal to the billboard face and supporting structures of one side of the proposed billboard, so. Most of the billboards we're gonna have, of course, are gonna be on sixty-five, which I'm sure our subject uh.
Yeah, so this would be a state statute thing, cause we only, for the sixty-five overlay district or in general, we usually just have met state statute with our standards, so this is a state statute requirement. But obviously, that can change if you wanna allow billboards along other streets, frontage.
Trying to think of where, where, we don't really have a street where we would have a billboard, would we?
County Road five is pretty busy. I could see someone out there with a farm wanting to sell some land and put up a billboard if they're gonna make six hundred bucks a month renting it out. I've always wondered how much, how much money they make on those billboards, cause I don't think the initial cost is that, I, I mean, it's high, but it's.
I've uh looked into it because I wanted to put.
Yeah, you got good land for that, yeah.
But city ordinance says I can't because there's one across the street within X amount of feet, so the billboards have to be X amount of feet apart from each other, and I think the highway sixty-five.
Oh, you're right, George. You're right. So here, I hadn't thought about it like that. So number four, G four. Billboards shall be located a minimum of three, thirteen hundred and twenty feet from the nearest billboard.
Oh, that's silly.
Well, does that mean across the street too?
Yes.
Okay.
That's silly.
The way that the billboard company uh interpreted it when they told me.
They don't do that in Blaine. Blaine, they have them directly across from each other.
They have to be a hundred feet away from each other, is what Mendota has told me.
A hundred, a hundred feet, okay, this is thirteen twenty feet.
Cause we're in an incorporated area, so every, they have like six different levels of incorporated, unincorporated freeways, highways, and we're on an, unincorporated highway, so um, or we're in, sorry, incorporated highway. So it's a hundred feet, but it's across as well as linear.
Okay, so it, so let's say that G four then, if billboards must be located a minimum of thirteen hundred and twenty feet from the nearest billboard. So you're saying that a hundred feet as far as like in a line or like a hundred feet from across the street?
Both.
Both, okay, so, so thirteen hundred and twenty feet is way above and beyond what we actually have to put in there, huh?
And I don't think that's following what we have.
Right.
It's not at all.
No, we have more than that.
Fifty, seventy-five feet apart in some areas, like especially across the street from my place.
Yeah.
There's like three in a row and they're not spaced too far apart.
Yeah. Well, and what is a billboard? I mean, is it, is it one sign or is it three signs on one pole or is it, you know what I mean?
No, it's uh one after another, yeah.
But I mean, if, there's other billboards where there are multiple signs, does that count as one or two or, you know, whatever, but.
I say on the highway sixty-five zone only, we go to state statute and then keep the rest the same for any inner city roads like five or Whiskey Road or.
So let's, let's just say we just cut number four altogether, so that there is no minimum between, or maybe we wanna make it a hundred feet. So that that way you can't stack them so close that you can't see them, I guess, but. But then that is what the state rule is, right? Is a hundred feet?
Yes, through our jurisdiction.
So what do you guys think about changing G four, instead of thirteen hundred and twenty feet, we change it to a hundred feet?
Yep.
That'd be awesome.
There you go.
Uh, but I mean, you're not the only one, I'm sure, that has property that would like to put a billboard up.
I'll be making phone calls next week.
But, yeah, I mean, it's not like it's just you, by any means, I'm sure, but, uh, okay, and then so the other one.
Make sure you get a permit from Mendat. Make sure you get a permit from Mendat first.
Uh, on G five, only one billboard shall be located on a parcel, so to me, I mean, if you're gonna, if they're a hundred feet or more apart, then I don't have a problem with how many are located on a parcel. Cause this is just saying the parcel has to be a minimum of, of one acre, right? But only one billboard per parcel, no matter what.
Oh, that doesn't make sense because I got.
Right, if you got.
Six acres of highway sixty-five frontage, so.
Well, and I mean.
I'm just using myself as an example.
Right, and, and like I said, you're not the only person, I'm sure, that has frontage there that would, would wanna use it, so. So yeah, I would say that to have a maximum of, you know, I mean, we could say that we wanted to be a minimum of an acre property, just so it's on a bigger property or something like that, I guess, but I don't even know if you really, do you really need that even?
I do, because I mean, what if you have a quarter acre lot and your neighbor doesn't wanna look at a sign?
What if you got that little corner out on five and sixty-five? And there, it's not prob, I don't think that's an acre, is it?
That's an acre, it was, in the admin reports, I thought it was over an acre.
Where we put our signs at?
Point six three, I thought.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So, I mean, there's an example there where it's not an acre, but who would, what do you care if they put a billboard there? I mean.
No.
Probably not. I don't know if they can, state rules, I bet you they can't put them that close to a stoplight probably. You know what I'm saying? But I mean, like, you could see other situations where maybe somebody has a little corner like that, that's not an acre.
But what about Steve's neighbor? That would be like an example. Mine, if his neighbor was gonna put up a billboard in his yard, he wouldn't want that.
Oh, but yeah, but you, I mean, you've already got other signs. Remember, all of our other restrictions we just talked about, you know, as far as the size of a sign, I mean, residential areas, you can have
Oh, yeah, I suppose.
Square foot of a sign is eight foot, height is four foot.
Yeah, true.
You know, so the residential areas, you've already got, you know, restrictions on the size, so your billboard's not gonna be able to go out there.
I think we should. Oh, I don't know. Yeah, I, I, I mean, obviously, I would say scratch it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it just, if they're a hundred feet apart, I mean, that's not gonna really, to me, I don't think we need to, um, to set a maximum allowed.
I don't think so either. What if you have a parcel that's a hundred acres? I mean, there's none of those that are here, but still.
If you did, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
Or what about, uh, there's a farm across from, uh, what is it? Uh, north of Minoco, right? And I think they have two billboards up and that's one parcel, isn't it? Or no, the one's not a billboard, the only one's a billboard, right?
Well, and that's the thing, is it's double sided, right? So I'm saying, there's two signs on it, but is it one billboard? It's one billboard.
Language in our own ordinance, we could just refer to state statute as well for billboards. If we are just going to allow them in that area. If we don't see there's gonna be any other along five.
Yeah, I mean, if state statute doesn't, does, does the state have a minimum on how many you can have though? Or a, a maximum, I mean, on how many you can have per parcel?
Um, yes, I believe they do.
Okay.
So, and I can, I just hit it up.
But I guess you're, you're right. I mean, no matter what we put in there, it's, whatever our maximum is, we'll just need to match the state. Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Sixty-five is gonna be interstate anyway, within X amount of years, I'd say twenty-five or forty at most. They, they're not gonna be able to go much longer than that.
Okay, so yeah, so we'll just go to s- match state statute on uh four and five, I guess, then. Okay. Uh, let's see, so I for decorative landscaping shall be provided around the base of the sign, and there again, I just, you know, this is on a monument sign, so. Um, I just think that if people wanna plant plants, they plant them, and if they don't, they don't.
Yep.
Agree.
Yeah, Jeff? You hate flowers?
I kill them. Can't keep them alive.
So I part, what is that? Nah, seven?
Yeah, signs may be externally.
There's signs like that already in town.
Yeah, why did I? Signs may be externally. Hold on, let me see where I'm at with that on my notes here. So that was five, five I seven?
I, I think you were wondering if they couldn't be internally illuminated for monument signs? That was your question, from what I remember. Cause it just specifically calls out signs may be externally illuminated, so I think just making sure they could also be internally.
Yeah, I think when I copied and pasted my stuff here, I didn't uh, I didn't grab that, that little section there, so on these notes, but otherwise, I would have had the questions I asked you. Um, is that what I asked you though, was, okay, so it is allowed and it's not, we don't need to change that?
No.
Okay, so. Here again, landscaping requirements on number three, a dense cluster of plantings with a minimum of, so, there again, I'm just asking to get rid of that requirement.
Ditch it.
Yep. Any objections to that? Let's see, the prohibish, prohibition of video display and no portion of a dynamic display may change any part of the sign face by method of display characterized by motion or pictorial imagery. Or depict action or a specific defect to imitate movement or display pictorials or graphics in a prog- progression of frames that gives the ilus- the illusion of motion of any kind, and so.
All of our, just before you, all of the dynamic sign requirements are exactly what is stated in the Mendat state statute for what we can allow on a dynamic sign. So our verbiage is verbatim.
Okay.
Like, so we can't deviate from that.
So my only question on that then is how, how, what? Oh, then let's just get rid of it just to simplify it?
Because they have to follow state statute, so let's just X it out.
That's true.
I suppose they, sorry, we'll add though, I mean, where it is makes sense to reference statute to not be more restrictive. It is nice to have some of those language wording in here, so staff can follow it without having to go back to state statute um every time.
Can we quote state statute instead then?
What's that?
Can we, can we reword it to say state statute, blah, 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 whatever the number is?
As allowed per state statute and say that in the wording, yeah.
That could be the wording, yep.
Um, because my concern is I've seen like the CBD joint.
That's exactly what I got in my notes, yeah.
When I go by, because they, they have different things on here all the time. I, I, I like it because it sticks out. For them as a business, I think it's very effective.
That's a ju, that's a different type of movement though, they classify that as, they classify that as a different type of movement.
Allow, cause that's to me, the way that this is written.
That's a change, that's a change movement, it's not a pick, it's not a, so what they're trying, what they're, yes, what they're trying to avoid is someone putting like a running dog or something across the screen, and you see it out of your peripherals and you slam on your brakes.
Or a video.
The changing signs.
Like somebody putting a TV show up or a sports games when you're driving by and you're distracted.
It's a, it's a more dynamic distraction.
A waving flag is allowed a lot of times because it's just a continuous movement.
Okay, so this won't limit um
A changing billboard.
Billboards at all, because they're gonna have to follow, okay. That was my concern, because I thought then the CBD joint was out of uh.
Well, that was my question too, is, cause we, we have signs that have movement on them, right? So, but I, I guess what you're saying now is.
It's kind of a gray area, I mean, who, who decides what's too much movement and what's not?
I will add that staff also doesn't verify what they're doing is correct. That would be on Mendat dev.
Right.
Maybe they've been fined, I don't know. They do have some really bright lights sometimes that they show, so. Staff doesn't know if they are within.
And they are paying attention, because the second we had one go up without the right permit, they let us know, like, so. Mendat did, so, yeah.
Hawks on that stuff, on signs, on. I think they got someone full time driving around just doing it, guaranteed.
They have someone for our region.
Yeah, see.
Specifically as his job, yes, I think.
Doesn't feel like it'd be a real rewarding line of work.
So, as long as we're on signs, has anybody been on thirty-five uh, thirty-five E down, down uh White Bear? Where that big old billboard's in right in that little, the little house right there? I always wondered, how did they get away with doing that?
Zoning, who knows, yeah.
It's like a residential house and then huge LED billboard.
They're probably the ones who contacted billboard company to have it put in there.
I'm, I'm hoping that is a property owner that put that in there, is making some money every month. I'd hate to see that it was a neighbor that put it there.
Right.
But I, I was like, man, that, you know, it don't matter, it's daylight every day, all day. Nobody, reminds me of a Seinfeld episode, the Kramer, you know, that big old chicken sign. Kept them up all night.
Kenny Rogers Roasters. Alright, uh, so ten A, dynamic signs that are used in conjunction with the static signage may occupy not more than eighty percent of the actual copy and graphic area of the sign, and I'm guessing is that, is that matching uh state rules as well, or uh?
I think number ten is our ordinance, so on top of it, um.
I think that's gonna limit what we can do at the liquor store. I mean, if we are, uh.
I mean, I just, if you're gonna, if they're gonna put a sign up, they should put, they should be able to decide a hundred percent of what their sign wants to be, right?
Yeah.
Any objections to that?
Nope.
So we'll just maybe get rid of that language?
I'll double check with Mendat to make sure that it doesn't say something different, conflicting, but um the one thing that, as I did put in my notes, is that we do require signs to permanently display what kinda business they are.
But with the liquor store, if we had a beer sign, that wouldn't work. If it just said beer, it doesn't say liquor store, it says beer.
Good point.
So we have to strike that no matter what.
But there could still be another section of the sign that said Isany Liquor Store below it.
Does it have to be, it says, has to be twenty percent of the sign, yeah. I mean, I can't think of any situation where we shouldn't, where someone shouldn't be able to decide what they want on their own sign.
Yeah.
So unless there's a state statute on it, I'd.
Okay.
Jeff, George?
Okay, so uh B there, dynamic signs that are not used in conjunction with static signage, maybe a maximum size of seventy square feet. And I don't know, this one you did say that it has to follow Mendat standards, okay. Which I guess.
That seems very small.
Yeah, that.
That doesn't seem right. Seventy square feet, that's, that's only like.
Ten by seven.
Yeah, that's, that's small, that's.
So that's, yeah, saying that if there isn't a sign saying what the business is, then it would have to be a smaller sign.
Say that again?
So, uh, it's like a dynamic display, I'm thinking like on a window. Like, so if you put one on a window that wasn't attached to a sign, for instance, it would have to be smaller. So it's not maybe your main sign, does that make sense? Like a second dynamic sign, I think is what it's more gearing towards. Trying to think, seven by ten though, that's pretty big. Yeah, right.
I think that's pretty small, personally, but I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's not very big.
That's not very big, I was putting up signs almost that big.
Looks like our maximum size. Our maximum sign allowed is two hundred square feet in the sixty-five overlay district right now, with a hundred square feet is the maximum sign area for um all the other zoning districts, looks like, for the most part.
Yeah, that was, that limit on the size was something we were gonna talk about, you know, maybe raising or, and that kinda was in that same chart with the height too, so I guess maybe we wanna come back to that.
Dairy Queen sign and stuff, they all fit easily within our guidelines, so just if you're thinking about that.
And that would be the two hundred.
Yes, yeah.
But we don't know if that's, so, so you're thinking that that seventy though is, is state?
Yeah, I will look into, I'll follow up with that to make sure.
Okay. Alright, so then on eleven, the installation of any dynamic sign voids any use of any temporary signage on the parcel that the dynamic sign is installed on, so. But then that would say, okay, let's say a temporary sign, like that black sign, you know, that would have like the neon lettering on it, that would not be allowed, so. Cause that's considered temporary signage, right? So I was just looking to get rid of that. Uh, let's see, how far were we gonna go here today?
We're supposed to go through eleven, subdivision eleven.
What, you wanna just get it done?
Or at least the next page, yeah.
What, there's not much left? I think it's a lot of pictures on the last parts of it here, isn't it? Yeah. Um, so subdivision seven, the temporary signs. The following signs require a temporary sign permit in zoning districts and shall meet the requirement as provided within this section. Uh, let's see. I don't know if you guys wanna just read through that?
I, I would, I'm in favor of getting rid of that, but I also, where are the fees? We're not seeing fees that you need to pay in order to.
It is fifty dollars, fifty dollars.
Yeah, that was my main concern too, was getting rid of those fees for temporary signage, especially for nonprofits and charitable and, um. Temporary events and within the city limits, like the rodeo or whatever. So if we, like, the, under the temporary signs, if we. Get rid of everything in yellow, would the fees automatically disappear, or is that a separate thing?
That would be a separate change to the fee schedule.
That's coming up later here, I think.
Oh, it is?
Oh, that's, that's, oh, it's in the fee sc, that, okay, gotcha, it's in that instead of, yeah. So, so yeah, even if we got rid of this language, we'd still, if you wanted to get rid of those fees, we would need to get rid of that. In there, uh, the fee section, then, yeah, so. Now, that, it, inflatable figures, I, I kid you not, for Christmas, one of the things that I got was a desktop inflatable tube man. From my kids, and it had a little story in there about the history of the tube man and how it was, you know, down in the Olympics in Atlanta. Uh, that they had started this thing, and it had gone all over the place, and then in Houston, Texas, all these, all these rascals decided that they were gonna try to limit. The tube man, and, uh, and it said, you know, what happened to freedom, it was, it said that in the book, and I was sitting here thinking, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're gonna do something about that, so, so banners, portable signs, and inflatable figures. No more than one banner or portable sign not to exceed thirty-two square feet, or one inflatable figure not to exceed ten feet. In width or depth. So width or depth of a tube man or an inflatable figure, would that, that doesn't cover height, actually. Doesn't, but you'd think that would be the thing that they'd really wanna stop, would be the height. But yeah, I mean, I'm okay getting rid of all this stuff, I mean, as, as far as temporary signage goes, and, and you just. But, you know, maybe there is, cause I mean, that, and that is what those black signs fall underneath, and there's a limit of thirty-two feet. But that's like the smallest black sign they make, and they make, you know, that's a four by eight sheet of plywood, and they make ones that are, you know, probably twice that. Or, you know, maybe even ba, three times that size, so. You know, I mean, and you still, you still have all of that, you know, right of way stuff that's gonna come into play, you know what I mean? It's not like we're changing that, so it's not like somebody can just go put a sign in the right of way, that's a temporary sign, I mean, we can still go and remove that. I mean, that's our prerogative, and, right? I mean, if somebody puts a sign up, that's, you know, for a garage sale from, you know, three months ago, well, we can remove that, cause it's in our right of way. I mean, it's not, so. So I don't know, I mean, I'd be okay with just getting rid of this entire section.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
The temporary signs, or, uh, the special use signs too, or?
Uh, let me see.
Are we there yet, or are you just talking about subdivision seven?
Right, now I was just talking about seven, but let me, let me see what, uh, what I was thinking on. So subdivision eight, I was just asking, do we really need these limitations?
So subdivision eight actually allows for more signage for these types of uses. So they're not, they're not restricting more, they're actually allowing for more.
Yeah, I feel like I was kinda confused on how the language was, was written on that. Retailer restaurant business isn't allowed to even have an. So. So like C here on that section, so subdivision eight C, you know, it doesn't list like restaurants or, you know, things like that. So I mean, are, are you not allowed to have a?
It's specific for gov, government institutions, so this is specifically implying for like a school or a park or. Like the BMX arena, that's where that would fall in.
Okay.
Oh. Con, convention centers, hotels and theaters, so, yeah, I don't know why those got grouped in there, but it's just a different kind of. It's specific for the use, so outside of the highway sixty-five district or. Where they're not currently allowed, like if on I say, I say any Parkway, if they wanted to put a BMX one there, that would be permitted. Because it's in this section.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
If you had a restaurant that wanted to put a dynamic sign up.
It would be allowed in those two districts, so because of the zoning districts that they're in.
Yeah.
So that's why they would be allowed, I'm not sure why hotels and. Yeah, I don't know why hotels and convention centers, maybe they thought they were gonna get one somewhere else, I don't know.
There's a hotel in a residential area, right in town. Unfortunately.
No, it was commercial.
It's still residential, there's a street, it's a residential street, but that's a different debate, but it's. Yeah, it wasn't rezon, I mean, at some point, it was rezoned by somebody to make more money.
And here's, you know, this one for the gas stations and service stations, talking about, you know, that you can't have a combined temporary sign area of a hundred square feet. Well, how many signs does QuickTrip have that are, you would?